Discuss and consider approval of an ordinance amending the Brookville Estates Plan Development Ordinance 1066 and 1137 by amending the developmental standards and concept plan for Phase Two. Mr. Morgan?
Good morning, Councilwoman Beadley. Approval was requested for amendment to the Brookville Estates Plan Development. The Brookville Estates Plan Development is located north of the SF-740 and Rancho Road in their section, located just north of SF-740 west of Rancho Road. The Plan Development was originally approved by the Council on December 3rd, 2002. The Plan Development established with a maximum of 303 residential lots with an average lot area of 8,991 square feet. The final plan for Phase One was reported in November 2003 with 148 residential lots, and those lots provided an average lot area of 8,577 square feet. So keep in mind, the average part for the overall Plan Development was 8,991 square feet. Phase One provided 8,577 square feet, meaning that to meet that overall average, Phase Two currently would need to average over 9,200 square feet. However, the developer is requesting to amend the development standards for Phase Two. It is under new ownership, so that's one of the reasons for the requested change. No changes approved the following. Amending the base zoning ordinance from the SF-10 district to the SF-8 district. Number two, amending the average lot area from 8,991 square feet to 8,500 square feet. Number three, amending the minimum home size from 1,500 square feet to 1,800 square feet, with the current Plan Development requirements, use at a minimum at 1,800 square feet. And also providing that fees in lieu of apartment dedication be paid for the Verde Hill Park, Mustang Street Park, and Park Trail space areas. So the applicant is specifically requesting that the money, money that are paid to satisfy those requirements are used in that general vicinity.
There's also been discussion about constructing a trail along the easement located diagonally across the center of the entire subdivision. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant did confirm that he is working with ATMS to complete an encroachment agreement for the trail, and staff has sent emails from ATMS that do confirm that they are closing the agreement. Staff did provide notification of the public hearing to adjacent property owners. We did receive one opposition from a nearby resident who is opposed to the request. That opposition cited concerns with lowering the lot sizes. The resident wanted to maintain the current lot sizes no matter what, no reduction whatsoever. The Planning and Zoning Commission has actually considered this request twice. At the first meeting, they did hear those concerns from the resident, and they did deny the request. Following that request, or that denial, the applicant did revise the request to what you see before you this evening. So the first request had actually much lower numbers as far as average and minimum lot sizes. And so the applicant came back, and then on October 8th, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend the revised submittal. Take any questions you have.
Okay, Council, does anyone have any technical questions for clarification from Mr. Morgan?
I have a couple.
Okay, Mr. Myers?
Is it true that the number of lots is actually not going to be changing from what was originally proposed? It's going to be the same from last time? They're not going to have more homes because of the smaller lot sizes?
That's correct, Mayor Potem Myers. The maximum number of lots is set at 303. The first time that this item went before Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the reasons for denial was because they were requesting to increase the number of total lots to 308. And so following that first meeting, they came back at the second meeting, and they maintained the 303 total lots, so same number as originally proposed.
Okay, thank you.
And the applicant is here, Mayor. If you do want to hear from the applicant, Mr. Clint Richardson is here.
Okay, I wanted to see if there were any other technical questions first, and then open it up to the public hearing. Do I need to make a motion to open it up to public hearing? Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this subdivision? If not, the applicant can come forward and speak, state your name and address.
My name is Clint Richardson, and my address is 11205, excuse me, that's not my address, 10950 Research Road in Frisco, Texas. I have printouts of a PDF drawing. Just a colored version of the drawing, it helps a little bit compared to the aerial drawing that's in the packet. So I've emailed that to you, I don't know often you take your emails. Peter suggested I bring a hard copy here to the community to see. Peter's done a good job summarizing our request, he's been great to work with all the stuff as we've gone through this. As he noted, some of the changes we've made, the base zoning district, SF-10 to SF-8 is really just a procedural change, SF-10 doesn't exist anymore, and all these standards that we're in the PD are, as far as lot size, lot, minimum lot area setbacks and such are being created through the PD. So we chose the base zoning district that felt the most comparable to what's actually being built in the field. As Peter noted, we originally were proposing to increase the lot yield by five, from 303 to 308. That was mainly a product of the other big components changed, was the original PD included a parkland, kind of narrow triangular odd-shaped parkland into the land plan. We met with city staff early on in that, and the concept plan that needed to be changed due to the ISB construction nearby that we're very excited about. So we took out the park plan, and with that 1.8, I believe acres it was, was in there, we went ahead and built into that with home lots and had a higher number. We heard the feedback at P&amp;Z that the additional yield was not something the city would feel like that. Commissioner Haller voiced that concern, and she was actually the one that made the motion for denial at initial times. We went back to the drawing board, refined our plan a little bit, kept the integrated HOA tracks that we've built, improved the look of the community, and reduced the lot yield back down to 303, and that's the plan that you see there. Couple of things that we've changed, we've increased the minimum home size, we've increased the rear yard setback, we are asking for reduction in the average lot area. That is a product of those green areas you see on the plan, the HOA areas, that we've been trying to integrate in the plan to help the overall feel of the community. If we gobbled up all those and put them into odd-shaped lots and things, including the area there at the cul-de-sac that has the connection to the pedestrian, we could get very close to the current standard in the PD, but we feel like this is a better plan overall, and still delivers similar, if not improved, lot sizes from current Phase One. On the trail, as I explained to P&amp;Z Commission a couple weeks ago, ATMS is sometimes a very honorary group to work with. The developer said that they had tried and failed, I kind of believe them, but luckily we were aware of, we've had some relationship with other projects at ATMS. We pitched to them to a plan that integrated putting the trail in their easement, which they don't like anything in their easement. Good for them that had the easement first, so they have the right to say so. But the plan we proposed to them, which is reflected on that plan, is within Phase One, the trail will be inside their easement, and as soon as we are able to in Phase Two, where we have the looser areas with HOA areas, we'll pull the trail off their easement and then continue the easement. So the intent, which is in the PD of connecting the two roads along the easement, is still fulfilled, but it was a plan that ATMS felt preliminarily, and Peter received the email correspondence with us, to give us approval for that. We won't have a full approval for that until we draw engineering plans with our Phase Two plans and submit it and go through their encroachment application process, but we feel like very comfortable that we'll be able to get that done, and that's intended to be built with Phase Two of the community. I think that hits a pile of highlights. We feel like we have a good plan, it's got a good pedestrian connections to the school district. I said, that's a catalyst for this community coming online. We've visited with the HOA Board, even though I've kept them up to date throughout the process, they haven't had any concerns with what we're proposing, and they're very much looking forward to the community being completed, having more people pay their HOA dues, it's always a good thing for HOA Board, so that's something they're looking forward to versus having an empty field there. So with that, I'm available for any questions, and respectfully ask for your approval now.
Questions? Who's first?
I have a question. Do you have any builders lined up yet?
No, we don't. We have a lot of people that are interested, though, we do, yes. Without really trying on our end, or putting out any signs or anything, they're finding us. And we're excited that there's that much interest in Forney and in this area, and we feel like as soon as we have these approvals here, and we are able to get in engineering and move forward, then we'll have several builders who'll be interested.
Mr. Carson?
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing that I would ask Council to consider, if in fact you do go forward with this, I would recommend taking out the requirement for the fees in lieu of for the park. I think it's a bad precedent to have a developer tell us what we can use them for. It's going to have to be tracked, so I don't think that's a good thing for us to start when we're getting these fees in lieu of, we do put them in, and they are used for that purpose, but to have them designate, I don't think that's a good precedent we should go forward with.
Other questions? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I have a question. So latest and greatest on ATMS, where are we? Have you had any further communications recently?
No. She, her name's Hannah Rutledge, I believe, emailed us back and forth and said the plan that we proposed was a hand drawn, hand drawn drawing at that point, gave her some rough dimensions that we won't get within, over the top of their line, which is really their biggest concern when they're trying to access the line in a short order in an emergency situation. If we kept the trail in a window of their easement that was not on top of their line for the limits of Phase One and then came out, she gave us a, I don't know, to be fair to the preliminary approval of that, of that plan that we, exhibit we provided to her, which also was like on this.
Perfect.
So the actual permit is, I believe they call it an encroachment agreement, so we would have to draw engineering plans, grading, details of the sidewalk itself, and then submit it to them. But again, what, am I passing with them? Once you get to this level, you can usually feel pretty comfortable, because usually they'll give you the Heisman pretty early on in the process if they're not willing to play mall with you.
Thank you very much.
I have some questions. What is the benefit of you decreasing the lot size?
The benefit of decreasing the lot sizes, as you see there, is the HOA areas, the open spaces that are integrated into the neighborhood. For instance, like the end of the cul-de-sac there, where the pedestrians can access the trail. That could be put into a home lot and give somebody an extra wide side yard, but we feel like the HOA area is more beneficial to the overall neighborhood. The small pocket areas there in the middle, and then along the gas easement, and near, along 740, we feel gives a more open area to the field along 740, and also provides an area for not the hallway effect along the gas easement that we have currently in Phase One.
Because I'm not sure if I was a homeowner, if I would want more land space out there, or if I would want more land space on my property, so I don't, I don't see a benefit to that just for that reason. And I don't see any bells and whistles as to why I would want to go to a smaller lot size. It does make me feel better when Sean asked the question that there wouldn't be any more homes built, that that's not the reason. But I can't, like I said, unless if there's, you know, some bells and whistles on why I would want to do that, I can't see, you know, when the council passes in the first place, and it's not your fault because you bought it after, and they, and they were supposed to build an average lot size, and they built the smaller ones, and now you have to build the bigger ones, unless if we change that, I can't, I can't see any reason to change that. I mean, I guess it's just a matter of opinion if you want more open space, or if you want a bigger lot size. I just don't see any bells and whistles why I would want to do that. I think it's just a matter of opinion, and how would that benefit, how would that benefit you, the builder, whether you leave the open space or whether you have bigger lots, if you're going to build the same amount of houses?
Again, from our perspective as a developer and planning neighborhoods, usable open space, even open space that isn't, like where you go throw a frisbee and be usable, quote unquote usable, having green spaces, areas integrated in the neighborhood helps with the visual appeal of the neighborhood. I've said, the things that, the three areas I pointed out just recently were along the gas easement, easement, along 740, the connection to the trail, all those things provide a visual appeal and also a usefulness, whether it's the trail or the pedestrian connection to the community, in our opinion.
Okay, and is this red line the trail?
Yes, Mayor, it is.
Okay, and if, whether they have bigger lots or smaller lots, where does the park space fit that they're supposed to, or is that the green space that he's already talking about, or in lieu of the money? Well, is that going to make a difference?
No, my only comment was that they, they do want to pay the fees in lieu of, but with conditions, and I'm asking Council not to take the conditions.
Okay.
So the original PD, I think I have a copy somewhere here, had a, let's see, I remember, I believe it's a 1.8 acre triangular shape, near the end of that cul-de-sac, that was going to be dedicated to the city, a city parkland, and that was the condition of the original PD.
Yes, right here. That would be our parkland? Or just a?
No, that would be HOA maintained, open space.
Okay, okay, so...
And we're also proposing that masonry screening wall along the side of the homes near 740, adjacent to, parallel to 740, to also help with the visual look of the community coming in. Real quick to the city managers, I understand what you're saying there, our intent really was just to, because we felt like the park was being taken, taken out of this agreement, was to try to keep the impacts locally, but I do understand your concern. Up to the council, however you all want to do that, we would be okay either way, it was just our intent to try to, instead of, without the parkland being dedicated, try to bring a park improvement, or whatever it is, to the immediate areas that the residents could still see, but I understand your concern.
Okay, we have a lot of developments that are going on right now, and if you go with how you did things how they were supposed to be, then I can't stop you.
Yes, Mayor.
But if you're trying to make a change, I'm concerned with how things are moving so quickly, and that's why I said if there's not any bells and whistles, you haven't, I'm not feeling the warm fuzzies. I don't, no, no offense to you, but does that make sense? Because our community is growing so fast, and I've got to have something that's going to say, hey, that is exciting, and it's not. So that's nothing personal, no offense to you, but...
Yeah, I understand your comment completely. I guess my response to that is, it is a, we're completing an existing neighborhood, so there's only so much change we could do. The street's coming to us, the surrounding development, which part of the reason we've never initially with Peter was, the old concept plan includes a collector road that's no longer valid because of the school district rolling along one edge of the property, road stops in different directions that are no longer needed because of the school district. The parkland dedication, which we live with the current PD, we would have to do that, and the city would have to take it, because it's not a, the way it's worded, Peter gives opinion on that, obviously, but the way it's worded, it's not a subject to parks approval, it's just shall be dedicated. So there are some things that we're fixing with this PD that are a benefit to the city, in my opinion, with the change in the concept plan, the removal of the parkland, the additional of the screening along 740, the visual appeal along 740 of the HOA areas, the increases in the minimum square footage of the homes. I think a lot of those things are, while they may not be something you drop by and go, look at that, they are significant improvements to the benefit of the city of this neighborhood.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a few things.
Okay, Mr. Myers?
I would say that this is an existing PD that they're just making alterations to. They're adding some open land. I think as far as bells and whistles, they are, just like they said, finishing out the development, unless you're looking for bells and whistles that are open to the public, which I wouldn't see you having here because it is an HOA area. I don't know what bells and whistles would benefit the city of Forney. Part of the reason that they're doing fees in lieu of is because we really don't want to take on more parkland right now for maintenance reasons. And I think as far as a prospective buyer, the prospective buyer will tell you if they want bigger or smaller lots by buying a home there. So if they buy a home, then they're good with the lot size. If they don't buy a home there, they can go look in Gateway, or Overland Grove, or Greyhawk, or wherever they want to go and find bigger lots. So I don't see an issue. I think I like the changes that you've done. I do have a question for Carl. On the county bond package, when they widened 740, they do, do they show sidewalks there going from this development up to the entrance of the new school area, do you know?
We don't show any, it's just right down the way to stick to our thoroughfare plan, so...
So it should? Okay, sounds good. I had another question for you, and I don't remember what.
Well, I think about that, I think the one benefit that is to the city is that hike and bike trail.
Sure.
Which have a connection from Heritage Hill Park and over. The gentleman I work with, they're also own and developing park trails, working on the next phases of that, including Station of Longhorn.
Right.
Over Rancho Road. So in the very near future, you'll be able to walk from Heritage Hill Park Trail down the gas line, up, cross, along Longhorn, around the corner, and get all the way to Diamond Creek Elementary School and the new park over there. So the trail itself, I do think is, oh, it's not holding whistle very much.
It can be a bell and whistle, don't, it's a small one, but it makes a difference.
So having that done, I'd say, I don't want to throw the other previous guys under the bus, because they very well may have been told, not just no, but H2W Hawk Six, no, don't even ask again, and they just said, okay, we got your message.
Absolutely.
This may be a different regime, or I caught them on the right day, who knows? But it looks like we're going to be able to complete that, which I do feel like is a bigger picture.
I do agree. The question I did have for you is, if approved, when would construction start, and how long do you think buildout might take? Of course, that depends on the market, but...
Based on the interest we're receiving, to the Councilman's question, we would intend to start engineering design. I would probably call the engineer on the way home.
Sure.
So just typically, it's around three months to get engineering through the process, not, Carl's a hard ass or anything, but just that's just how long it takes. And then usually about 14-ish months to develop the road, to where the point where it's going to be accepted and home start.
And home start, so homes would start?
You're talking 18 months outside date from right now.
To where homes would start?
Mm-hmm.
And then full buildout, of course, is going to depend on the market.
Absorbing rates, yeah. I mean, we got 100 and, I thought, 150 something lots, a couple builders, three or four month kind of thing.
Right, absolutely. Okay, yeah, I don't know what other bells and whistles we would be able to add at this point, it's an existing PD. We will be discussing one where we have the chance to do that tonight, so I'm looking forward to that one, though, so, thank you, sir, for your time.
Excellent, thank you.
Just saying, because I think my question first is for Carl. Okay, if the trails, if he's putting these trails in, and they're supposed to connect Heritage Hill and Longhorn Trail on Mustang Creek, how's that going to work with? I assume it would be Tech Dot, or is it the county? Because that road there that crosses is a major thoroughfare, so that it's, if it's going to be a trail that crosses a major thoroughfare, how's that going to work with traffic and people trying to cross a major thoroughfare on a trail?
I'd need to look at exactly where this, a lot of it is, but we do have, the road that the school is putting in is going to have a signal. We would have to look at the proximity to that, but we probably wouldn't want a signal for just a trail crossing, Tech Stop, Hawk Way, we wouldn't allow that. It would encourage the movement to happen where the cross is going to happen for the new intersection for the school. There, there, you have controlled access to the cross, that's going to be a, you know, a fine lane road at some point, so that would be difficult to control it, I guess, depending on my thoughts are, if we want to encourage the crossing, or if we want to be dependent.
Okay, but that's the new school coming in, right?
Right.
Okay, well, I'm talking about where Criswell is. That's where Heritage Hill, and then where Longhorn is, that's Mustang Creek. I could see it might be a little easier to get across Mustang Creek because there's a divider. I mean, I don't know how a bike's going to do it, but over where Criswell is, on Heritage Hill, there's not going to be a light there, and like you said, Tech Dot's not going to put a light there. How is that, I mean, I'm trying to visualize and make it work, and try and figure out how is this going to work with a crossing from Heritage Hill to go across this trail over there? How's that going to work? You're the engineer. And we don't, I think our hands are tied because that's a Tech Dot road, it's not even a city road, and to me, it just seems dangerous. I would want to see where that would work for a trail, but I'm asking, how's that going to work? Because that's a major thoroughfare, and people have been, someone was just very seriously injured on that road as a matter of fact, and is in ICU. And if somebody's going across a trail there, how, just, I just want to know, how's that going to, how can that possibly fit?
You know, it's a discussion to have with Tech Dot, I don't know if this is the best place to try and answer this, right?
Okay, I understand. I'm trying to get convinced.
Yeah, I'd look at where it is, and see, where is the proximity to, you know, prison, where the new light is, and just look at what controlled access is important to the community. If you really want to see is it how, how, like, does it get used once it's fully developed? Does it warrant even a cross?
Okay.
Well, if they look into that, and they put something like that in, you have to make sure it's all the warrants, is it being needed? You want to make sure all those are covered.
Okay, if this doesn't get approved, what's your Plan B?
Our Plan B? Very good question. Right now, it's, we would have to gobble up all those open spaces, make some unusually looking shaped lots, and then try to salvage getting the same yield that we think we have right now. So, and then, I wouldn't want to give the city the parkland, because y'all don't want it, but I don't know that the current PD would not allow us to do it, truthfully.
But how, how is your yield going to be different if the lots were bigger?
I'm just saying, once we start adding all those areas in, sometimes, for instance, if you have a really deep yard and it needs to drain towards the front street, sometimes that gets a little odd and difficult to do. So we'd have to go back in to get some pretty detailed looks to see, all right, is this A equals B kind of thing. But, you know, we feel like this plan visually looks very good, works very well, so, to be honest, we haven't really gone to a Plan B, because we're hopeful that this would be our Plan A, and we wouldn't need a Plan B.
Well, the reason I ask that is because actually, if this was the Plan B, I guess it would be a Plan C, because you did come to the P&amp;Z to begin with, and you went back to the drawing board and made bigger lots. But they went from 9,500, or, let's see here, something like that, 9,200 to 8,000, and then you brought them to 8,200.
Yeah, initially, what we met with city staff, and it is probably my misinterpretation, we felt like the 80, or the 7,700 was where we started, this SF-6, so 7,200 was 7,7, minimum 7,700. We, after working through that, we moved it up to 8,200. We've since been, this whole time, we keep massaging the plan, massaging the plan, massaging the plan. So the current proposal, which I believe is 8,500? I don't know off the top of my head, I'd say we've seen, yeah, the current proposal is 8,500. With that plan, we feel comfortable, we can, now that we've kind of kept reevaluating, reevaluating. It helps, I'll make another little bell, another little whistle, if increasing that to 8,600, because we feel like we can get to 8,600, because that plan that you're holding gets us a little over 8,600, and we feel comfortable with it. I gave, always give myself a little bit of leeway for engineering issues that you just don't see until you see them, and then they become a problem, and it paints you into a corner. But if the, if it's, you know, increasing it from 8,500 to 8,600, shows a little more goodwill, and helps tilt the scales a little bit, we can do that.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Peter, when was the original PD approved? Was it '01 or '02?
'01.
'01, okay. '01 was a different time in development, it was 19 years ago, development standards were different. Nowadays, and of course, everybody knows, me up here, I've been the one that's been preaching big lots for a long time, and I think everybody knows that. However, you know, in today's development world, it's a different story out there now because of rising land cost, because of rising construction cost. The, what you see now is, you see a little bit smaller lots, but you see... The, what you see now is you see a little bit smaller lots, but you see a bigger product sitting on that lot. Instead of having to pay more for the land, they're sinking it into the actual structure that's on the property. And so slightly smaller lots is what's going on right now. You drive anywhere in the metroplex and that's what you see. The days of the 9,000, 10,000, 11,000 square foot lots, I think, are, are pretty limited on those developments. Now, we still have some in Foxhalla, in the newer part. We also have Lover's Landing, where those lots are, what, 15,000 square feet? But those are a, a luxury type and you just don't see that now in today's development world. What they've done here is taken a, an area that, and it made it a lot nicer. Yes, lots are a little bit smaller, but they're putting a bigger home on there. They're putting a, a better product on there than what originally was going to go on there. And that's the trade off in, in today's world, and that's something that we need to understand and our citizens need to understand, that developments change over the years. You know, this is a 19-year-old PD. What should have been done was they should have had a 10-year limitation on it where it had been built out by 2011. That wasn't done because that wasn't thought of 19 years ago. So now we've got what I feel is a, a better product than what was under the old PD. Yes, the lot's a little smaller, but, you know, you're getting a better quality product that's going to be placed on that lot. And I don't think there's too much more that can be done with it than what they have done.
Are we getting a developmental agreement on the type of masonry and stuff like that that we're going to be able to do? No? No development agreement on the type of masonry or anything?
That, that hasn't been brought up.
Then, pardon me?
That hasn't been brought up to us, no.
Okay, well, then you don't know that you're getting a better product, because they can do whatever masonry, whatever, they can throw up whatever they want to.
That may be true, but it's, still, it's going to be a, a bigger home. But that's the trend now, although I do think we should have done, that's my only concern is one of the development agreement, that I think we need to do that on every single thing that comes before us, but I don't know if we'd been able to do that on this one or not since it was an existing PD.
Peter, can you weigh in on that, or John?
Does the HOA have any, any standards?
I don't believe it has any standards that specifically state to the presented direction.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with the HOA, what, what their CCRs are in this particular neighborhood. Generally, when, when you're looking at a, a closing out phase, you're going to see consistent product through the remainder. As, as Mr. Johnson's pointed out, that when this first started, we were looking at almost 20 years ago, but we still see brick and mortar homes. And so I would state that you're probably going to see a lot of those familiar looking homes that you're having in that neighborhood, it'll probably stay consistent. We, we don't have, and it gets a little tricky here because in, in probably the earlier stages in the PD, you have maybe some, some development standards or regulations with regard to building materials and whatnot, and we just don't have the ability to enforce that now outside of some sort of other consideration being provided for, where, where we can consider that separately under a separate instrument rather than via an ordinance of the city. And, but at this point in time, we just don't have that opportunity or capability. And so that, that, that should not be a, a, a point for your consideration tonight on this item, however. And, and, but again, because this is kind of the phase, or the last phase of the development, I would, I would imagine or envision you're going to see a similar product.
But they don't have to because the law has changed, unless if we have a developmental agreement, they can use the type of masonry that they want to and all that, that could, that could change.
So the city does not have the ability to enforce certain building materials, you're right?
Unless if there's a, an agreement.
Right.
Okay. Are you willing to put an agreement in?
Actually, that's news to me tonight. I wasn't prepared to answer that question. I know, I know that some cities are doing, going down that path, but without seeing a draft of it and how it's, like I say, this is new, new information, so it's hard for me to, without discussing with the owners and the.
Can, can you do that and come back to us?
I, I, maybe.
Well, my concern is, okay, I can understand a smaller lot and a bigger home, but there are developers that promise this and this and this, and unless if we have an agreement, then it can go this and this and this.
Sure.
And I'm just trying to look out for, there's been some, and can be some really big homes and they can be built not, because we can't enforce something unless if there's an agreement.
Mayor, and if, if, if you would prefer, I can, I can provide with the council with some legal guidance and direction, perhaps on this particular matter that you're bringing up on this item, and would, would prefer to do so in executive session. And so if, if the council would, would like to discuss this more, I would, I would recommend that we do an executive session.
Okay, is that okay?
On with me.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to.
Comments on this item, you could go ahead and close the public hearing and then we can move on, so that it can be considered for additional discussion by the council after the executive session.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. The big executive session, do we have any motions? It was public hearing, action item number one.
Madam Mayor, if we approve public hearing, item number one, we're moving all conditions for fees in lieu of appropriations.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Trailer.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Myers, and before we take a vote, I would just like to say that the connection for the community is a good thing and that is what our community wants. And it's just a matter of opinion on the size of the lots, but be, I know that you can develop right now, but because you're not increasing the amount of lots, I'm just trying to, because we've got a lot going on with developments, and so I just wanted to add, add that in there. Okay, and all in favor?
Did y'all make a motion to approve the ordinance without the?
Yes.
Just with what?
And she needs to read the ordinance.
And that was Trailer, and Mr. Second, and Myers, okay. An ordinance of the city of Forney, Texas, amending the Conference of Zoning Ordinance Number 1085 in MAB is amended by amending existing Plan Development Ordinance Number 1066 to amend the Plan Development Standards and Concept Plan of approximately 43.875 acres in the J Lopez survey abstract Number 286 in the city of Forney, Kaufman County, providing a severability clause, providing a safety clause, providing a repurposed clause, providing a penalty clause, and providing for publication and effective date.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.